Then we're going to say the place of leisure. Robert, would you like to?
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody who may be watching on our Facebook Live and those who may be listening on 96.5 FM. We're going to start our meeting and we're going to start with our roll call from our clerk, Mr. Jay LeSueur.
Town of Vidalia, Board of Alderman, roll call for a regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman dated May 12th, 2020. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman McCoy.
Present.
Let the record show that Alderman McCoy is present and accounted for via telephone under the state open meetings laws currently in place due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Alderman Probst.
Here.
Mayor, let the record show a quorum of the board is present.
Okay. Our first thing we business we have to take care of, we have the minutes of our regular public meeting from our last meeting April 14th. For any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, number one on our agenda, we're going to have the review of our financial statement from March 2020 and our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moke, is going to give that for us now.
Okay, your the financial statements for tonight's meeting include the balance sheet, a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the nine months ending March 31st, 2020, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. In summary, the town has combined cash of 5.8 million, which includes 2.4 million in the hydro and 1.8 in the sales tax fund, which are restricted funds. Investments of 3.8 million, which includes 2.3 million in the hydro reserve fund and 1.5 in the general fund, million. Total assets of 34.3 million, total liabilities of 6 million for a fund balance of 28.3 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the nine months ending March 31st, 2020 indicates there's combined revenues of 25.4 million or 69% of the total budget and total expenditures of 24.1 million or 68% of the total budget for a total change in net position of 1.3 million, which is at 75% of the total budget. In order to provide more transparency and a clear understanding of the variances in the budget, I have included in your packet an overall budget analysis by department, including comments on various variances between actual and budgeted revenues and over expenditures. The reason for the increase in the change in net position from the previous month is due to the higher percentage of sales tax collections at the end of March for the year and due to the increase in hydro royalties. On May 1st, the town received 5.1 million in royalties. Overall expenses are lower than expected. Approximately 2 million of the 3.6 million capital outlay budget has been expended through March 2020. The road improvements did not begin as planned and the river is up, so construction is behind schedule and will carry over to the next fiscal year. This would explain why the combined expenditures are lower than budget. The annual budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021 is being presented to the Alderman tonight and will be available to the public for tomorrow. The public meeting and vote on the budget is going to be scheduled for Thursday, May the 28th, at a special meeting. Due to COVID-19, we limited the number of meetings to discuss the budget, but the department heads did their part to help formulate a budget. The council members have all had a chance to contribute also. The proposed overall budget has only slight changes from the current year budget. The 2019-20 amended budget will be presented at the next meeting if necessary. The town of Vidalia has not been negatively impacted by COVID-19 in a big way monetarily. We have purchased sanitizers, thermometers, laptops, gloves, et cetera, that we would normally not have purchased. Employees who worked for two weeks were paid holiday pay. We incurred legal expense regarding, we have incurred legal expenses regarding employee issues that we would not have had. But all in all, the town has not experienced any hardships due to the virus.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Any questions of Deborah on her financial report? Deborah, she's done a wonderful job working through this stuff and working on a budget. And it's, you know, you've done outstanding and we appreciate that work that you have done. One of the things that I do want to mention is as we get go into, you know, making the budget, you know, available to our public, if you can, if you're watching or see this video later, we've got to come up with a better way for you to be able to ask questions during these meetings on any kind of item that we will be taking a vote on. And just to clarify, if you're in the public and you're listening, if there's an agenda item that's going to require a vote, you have a chance to make a public comment. And tonight, we have a couple of things that's going to be taken a vote on. And I, whatever best, how does the Alderman, do they have questions? Do any of their constituents give them questions that they, before we do that later on today? Do you have any public, have anybody reached out to y'all for a question on any of our agenda items for tonight?
I do. I have questions for agenda item number five and six only.
On which one now?
Five and six only.
Five and six only? Do you want to wait?
So far, yes, yes, let's wait.
You want to wait till we get to those?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Anybody else who's going to have a question? Is any other recommendation from the Alderman, how we can field questions for tonight in relation to just these couple of items that we have on our agenda tonight?
I mean, if anyone, I know, are we broadcasting through the radio station as well tonight?
Well, it's just, it's just with people who might have shown up here, it's a limited outreach on what that can reach for those people.
So if there's anyone in the parking lot who's listening, they can contact one of the Alderman by phone, or if anybody is Facebook Live and they can ask the question, because I think we're all kind of watching it as we go.
I'll, I'll actually give my number, if they want to call in on my number, and I guess we'll give them a stated amount of time as we, do y'all want to go ahead and get those comments now or wait till we get to those agenda items?
Wait till we get to the agenda items. Give them time, if they, we just made an announcement, let's give them the time. They want to call in, they can call in and.
Okay.
And a lot of times, they don't know what their question is until they get to it.
Right, that's right. And I will, I guess they can call in on my phone and I'll take that question and I'll read or I'll put it on speakerphone if it is, it is a question related to our agenda item. And I'll go and put my number if you, someone needs just my number, 601-807-3298. Now, I will take a call when I get to that point and ask you if you have a question. If you don't get in on the first try for more than one person, try back after you, if you're watching this or listening to it, so. Okay, let's move on with our occupational license, that's number two on our agenda. And first one we have is Brenda Floyd for Deep South Quality. I can't see what the name for LLC is, however, what she's going to be doing is opening up the old Fish Fry building that was the Bud Hut, and she's going to be doing business at BB's Fish Fry at 1100 Carter Street here in Vidalia. And is there any questions on that?
Yes, sir, I'll make the motion to approve as applied.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. The next thing we have is going to be change of ownership only on the, I can't say her name, but it's, it looks like Nanwa Bernard is going to be changing, she's going to be taking over the Vital Nutrition LLC. And that's at 1642 Carter Street in Vidalia, Louisiana. Do I hear a motion to accept that ownership?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's all of our applications for occupational license. We have a couple of signed ordinance. Mayor, before you, before you get that far, does anybody know, Ms. Floyd, it's Deep South Quality something LLC? Looks like INSB, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a Deep South Quality Inspection LLC.
Inspection?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Council. Okay, first sign application we have, you have attached is BB's Fish Fry. Can you see that? That's going to be their, their logo. Any questions on that? Do I hear a motion, we entertain that sign? I'm sure to go on the existing sign that's up there.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a sign for Tensaw Community Health Center doing business at Vidalia Community Health Center. That sign is already up and it's, you'll see a picture of it on your second page there. Any questions on that?
There's basically two signs, I noticed when we went by. There's back, there's a sign in the parking lot, but there's also a sign on the building.
On the building itself, aren't they both the same?
Actually, two signs, I think they're actually the same, but there are two signs.
Okay.
One on the face of the building and one out in the parking lot. So they should have the same, same sign.
And that's what their application, they're asking for two.
Yeah.
That's what, they said two, I didn't see the two, but.
On location, signs in the parking lot and then one in front of me.
Yeah, but there's two of them either way, same signs.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Okay, next thing we have is we're going to be introducing this ordinance adopting the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Vidalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year 2020 and '21. This is not an action item, it's just the introduction of this ordinance. And all the advertising and so forth will be forthcoming, as well as any residents who are wanting a copy of this budget can get in touch with us, we'll make sure that we'll make it available to them, so. Let the record reflect that introduction. Number five, board discussion and vote on a resolution. Excuse me. Have we decided on the, the date that the public hearing is going to be held so we can get the notice of introduction published?
Did you say March the 27th?
March 28th.
May 20th.
I mean, uh, May 28th.
Thursday, May 28th, sorry.
And I, is it six o'clock, right? Is that what we, is that what we?
5:30, six, whatever, whatever it be, it's good with y'all.
What is the board, you know, it rips, five, six?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
That would be May, March 27th.
Okay. Number five on our agenda is board discussion and vote on a resolution authorizing the town of Vidalia to prepare and submit a pre-application to the statewide flood control program for assistance in the implementation of a project for the purpose of reducing existing flood damages, providing for the necessary documentation of said flood damages, and providing for other related matters in connection with therewith. And what those measures are is a pumping station in the slough area is what this project is. And so I'll open it up to board for any discussion.
First question I have is, someone asked, how long is this, if approved, how long is this application process going to take?
That's a good question. First, it's got to get funded, it's got to go through the state, and of course, they're having, their, the state offices are going to open up Friday as well. However, what is going to be the procedure? Alderman Gardner, all I know is we were given a deadline to, DOT has some money, and we were given this deadline to get this in, and so we, we jumped through hoops to get this because this is something we know we had to do anyway. And here was an opportunity, and this certainly qualifies for those funding, for those funds. And we thought we should jump on that, and we pushed through an application, and we feel very good about it. If they, if they're going to be doing, funding some of these projects, this would certainly be one of them.
Second question on item number five, how long have we known about this application? And why are we just now applying?
Because we just got an email last month about it, and they gave us a deadline, they actually extended the deadline, but we, we had it before the deadline, that's why.
What was the deadline?
May 29th is the deadline.
What was it?
May 29th was what they extended it to.
Yeah, that was extended, yeah.
Um, the last question was, what's the percentage of assurance that this will possibly go through? And if not, what about the special project money?
We will have enough project money and the hydro monies to do it, Robert, if that's what the people and y'all elect to do. However, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I could tell you what, if I can tell you whatever committees have to approve that, I don't have the answer to that. We're, we're optimistic that we're going to try everything we can to get it. But to tell you what, whatever committee the DOT has to use their, their approval process, I can't, I can't answer for them. All I can tell you is we're doing everything we can to get it and get the funding for it.
Is this going to be the same kind of, like you were talking about, is this a fund where it's put in, where other people have funds going into the same projects? We may get some or we may not.
There's going to be, yeah, this is opened up to the state.
It's opened up safely, correct?
Yes.
It's not just us, it's a lot of people, so. We may get some, we may not.
This is.
It's just like those other funds that we're still waiting on, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
We hadn't got.
But this is, I mean, when they have this put out there and this was certain, something that certainly qualified for those funds, we would be remiss if we didn't jump on that and try to get those funds. Now, let me say this, if they fund this project, we won't be, have an opportunity to get any funds for anything similar to that from FEMA for that particular project. So this was something that would be, hopefully, we'll have a pretty quick turnaround as far as response or answer to. But it does, it's not satisfactory. My thoughts are that we have enough money in our, the hydro project money that we could fund this if the board and the residents want to make that a priority. Also, we'll be, the new budget reflects that we're going to be looking at probably, and I'll say this, but right now, we have 1.1 million in the project money, is that right, Deborah, is it 1.1? Is that project money for hydro?
Should be.
It's 1.1. Well, we're fixing to, once this new fiscal year starts, we'll be adding somewhere around 1.2 million to that. So you're looking at over $2 million in project money that I think we, you know, should really consider that. The other 1.1 to 1.2 million is going to be in a rebate to our resident, our electric consumers for a rebate this year, and that's, I'm excited about that. And that's going to be a big help to people and I'm, so, Robert, one way or another, answer to the question, as quick as we can get this done, yes, we will, but if we can get funding from DOT, I think we would certainly jump on that.
And I think the, you know, I really think the nature of Alderman Gardner's questions are just the importance of it. One way or another, we want to get this started.
Right, I think it's very much needed.
And this is like the questions that I get from the constituents that evolve around in that district.
Right.
So I couldn't give them the answers because I didn't know, so that's why I asked them tonight.
Now, you kind of touched, Mayor, on the FEMA funds and the GOSEF funds on this. Will this application, not the approval of, but just the application in and of itself, will that negate the applications we already have in for the FEMA and GOSEF monies?
FEMA and GOSEF money right now does not involve a pumping station. That's money on direct damages that were done from the flood that we're negotiating with now. We've been approved for a lot of that, we're negotiating some other things. But they've already approved some that we're just waiting on getting it finalized, we're working, I think, whatever, two weeks with, with GOSEF and FEMA to get these things done. And this is strictly mitigating monies back that we were having on street projects, sewer projects, and, and some of those other things that we're trying to get. This is going to require, it's called BRIC, is what we're trying to work with now with FEMA on pre-mitigation disaster funds to, if we didn't get the DOT money to try to get our stuff for the riverfront to stop the flooding, you know, some kind of temporary or permanent barrier to keep the river coming up and getting our riverfront. It's called BRIC, they're working on it now through legisla, through the, through the federal government to get this, setting the guidelines on, on what you have to go through in the application process to get those monies. That's being worked on now. So what we're working on now with FEMA strictly with, with flood related. Yes, Alderman McCoy?
You, you have no timeframe where the federal government will be able to do whatever it is they want to do to us, to us, and, you know, what we need to get done as far as that, you have no timeframe, Alderman.
If, if someone could tell me that timeframe, I'll, I'll be glad to listen to them, but dealing with federal government and timeframes has, has been pretty frustrating at best on getting any kind of, nailing them down on when you're going to get paid and when that's, the funding is going to happen, so. But all I can tell you is we will, we will stay on it, on top of it, to try to, you know, speed it up and stay in touch with. I, I think we've got some good contact now, Alderman McCoy, with FEMA and GOSEF now on trying to stay on where we're at in, in the process on this whole thing. We, we really developed a good relationship with them on first-name basis with a lot of the ladies who are, are representative of us for our area with FEMA and GOSEF, so.
I'm concerned on the application that it looks as though number seven may have been highlighted in the color copy, but there's no information there. Is this application that we're voting on, is this in complete form?
Heather had this, she's still working on putting information together. In fact, we had Robert, Alderman Gardner, she, you know, provided some photos and some dates and some addresses of residents that were affected by this. And she was waiting to gather that information, so that's what's going to go in that.
This isn't a complete application.
And she'll have that with it.
There's photo evidence, there's a lot of other things that we were still compiling to get it done because the deadline was going to come before, she's pulled all this together to get, to make the May 29th deadline, but it will be made, but this is, this is the nuts and bolts over here for sure. Any other questions?
Is this something that requires public hearing at all, since this is a vote, this is not a public comment? Okay. And I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion is made to.
I second the motion.
Okay, second made by Alderman Gardner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The last item on our agenda is the board discussion and vote on a resolution to authorize the town of Vidalia to execute and deliver to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which is called FERC, an application for the partial transfer of the license for the operation of the CDA Murray Jr. Hydro Electric Station, and to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the application in any, in all documents necessary in connection therewith. Okay, any questions?
On that particular one, we, this is basically no negotiation for him as far as negotiating in the contract, it's just more of a transfer like.
This, this is a transfer, this was a negotiation between Brookfield with some of the unnamed owners of the hydro plant with Catalyst, and this is them basically making a transfer. Any kind of transfer like that has to go to FERC for approval, and we're a co-licensing with Catalyst, so we, we would have to approve that transfer. And it does not affect Vidalia's position, it does not affect our, our present position or our future position as it relates to the hydro. This is strictly a formality. Now, we didn't cautiously, I mean, just show up and do this. This, this was announced to us, the CEO of Brookfield came in, and Brookfield, by the way, is a very, very large company. They, they, they are a very strong company, they are, they are the managing company of the hydro now, they manage our hydro. They own currently, Brookfield itself owns over 200 hydro plants in the world. They own, I can't remember, and hundreds of solar, solar facilities, they own several windmill facilities, and this is a very strong company. They are basically probably going to have a controlling interest in Catalyst, but we're still a co-licensing, and that won't change anything. So, but they, they are going to do this and, and basically assume ownership of Catalyst, I think.
Okay, one other thing is, as far as the, just so everybody feel good about it, is that nothing's changed as far as our contract that we have or anything.
Absolutely not. And that's, that's one of the things, when they first came to us, it's been six to seven or eight months ago, and when they did that, you know, we all looked at each other going like, we immediately hired McGlinchey Stafford out of Baton Rouge, which is a very, very reputable, one of the most reputable in the state, and really good in contract law and public, public works, to review this and review the sale, and they have been working with us along with our council. And we've worked many hours on making sure that we're protected and everything is good. I feel completely good about the whole situation. And Brookfield's been a very good partner so far. Matter of fact, they're the ones that gave us the funds to, to make the City Murray, you know, museum, they're in our convention center, so.
One other, one other thing, what, like we talked about, the, the reason they're doing this, we assume, is the fact with revenues more coming to the city of Vidalia, the shareholders are losing, not losing, but not getting as much. And we feel, you feel, and we talked about it, now that we're getting more, they're getting less, they're selling and making those transfers. That's one reason this is all taking place in assumption, in an assumption.
That's an assumption and.
Because we're going to be grabbing more of it than we have in the past.
And, and yeah, we're going to be, we're going to send a lot more income. And in the future now, this, you know, we're right now, to give you an example, Vidalia is buying 6% of that generation from the hydro, Energy of Louisiana is buying the other 94%. We're bound by law, we're paying $150 a megawatt for that, for that generation right now. Market is only bearing around $30 to $40 a megawatt. And so you can see that, you know, when that contract ends, which is going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be December 31st of 2031, just for those people who are curious, 2031 is when it ends. Now, in 2029, Catalyst would have to ask Vidalia or send a letter to Vidalia in writing, what are your plans to do with your option to purchase in 2031 or 32, which would be January 1st? And I think discussions, and that's not very far off. And I think we, McGlinchey Stafford, I think, will be a good company for us to move forward with and stay in contact with as whoever's going to be mayor during the fut, in the future, to make sure that Vidalia is, you know, is protected during this time, and also whoever's going to be here in the future to carry that relationship on and make some good sound decisions on who's going to be the owner of this thing in 2031 or 32. So again, this does not change anything of our position, in fact, I think it solidifies it because Brookfield is a very strong company in renewable, that's what they deal with, they deal in strictly, you know, renewable energy, and, and they are very, very strong in that, in that market. And I, I see it as a plus, I really do.
Other than that, we just need to be prepared to do our part whenever that 2031 gets here.
I was going to see if anybody else has a comment, Alderman McCoy, if anybody else has some more comments on it.
So no negative impact from them having a large amount of shares than we would hold?
Well, we're just a co-licensing with them, okay? Catalyst is actually the owner of the station, we're co-licensing, basically, they, they were seller, we were the purchase, basically. And we have, it's a co-licensing agreement, and that's, there's a, there's an agreement drawn up, and it was in 1985 it was drawn up, it was amended in 1988. It was amended and it had some different things changed in it, and it only made it better for us during that time. I won't go into the details of why it got better for us in 1988. Mayor, Mr. Randazzo was the mayor then, but it took some, some things out of that original agreement, which would, could have hurt Vidalia in the long run, but it, as it stands with the way things, power calls have gone, it's really helped us. So, and we've been blessed with that, the way that's gone as far as us being protected with them.
One other thing on this, and again, this resolution here, this is only for this particular transaction, correct?
That's it, that's only for that.
This is the only thing that we're going to, you'll have the power to do this one on your, for it.
They have, FERC has to approve this, they haven't done that yet. However, for them to approve it, I will have to sign a document acknowledging this transfer.
And at that point, once you do that, this is basically done.
It's done.
Okay, that's correct.
The wording in this is, got my attention, it really did. Just simply, you know, saying things like any and other, all agreements, documents, instruments, later in it, it says, you know, the mayor is hereby authorized to, you know, execute any other such documents that he deems in his sole discretion necessary, you know, things like that are just kind of red flags to me. Not to say that you would ever do anything that hurts Vidalia, because I know that you won't. I, I know that that would not be an issue. However, just like you said just a moment ago, you may not always be the mayor, you know, 5, 10, so forth and so on. So please don't take that as questioning you, but decisions that are made by resolution are in perpetuity, so that carries on to whomever is next. Those things kind of raise, you know, just question marks for me, and I know that it's legal speak, and I know, you know, these are things that have to be put in, because I know you drafted it, and it's not.
Nope.
It's not in any way, you know, negative to anybody.
I did not draft it.
Okay, not in any way negative to anybody.
I reviewed it.
It's just, it draws a question for me. And, you know, to learn that y'all have been kind of talking about this for the last three months, yet we've just learned about it. You know, I think that as the board that needs to make the decision on something like this, even if it seems miniscule, when we just get a two-page document that says words like "any" and "all" and "at his sole discretion," and those things, it, it makes someone like me wonder, well, I mean, especially, for example, in three, in, in part three on here, it says that we are. it says that we are ratifying, confirmed, and approving anything that you have done or will do, we don't know. So, I think that, you know, I would have felt a lot more comfortable had we, we known when it began three months ago, that this was something that was brought up, and, and just kinda brought into the loop, rather than right here at the end saying, we need to get this done, we need to get it done right now, because FERC has to approve it. As the, as the body that has to vote on something like that, I think information really squashes that fear. Do you, do you, do you know what I'm saying, without-
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Dory, but I think it does, a question of trust on this transaction. What this does, I've explained, we have attorney's firms who are very, very intelligent, our attorneys, that's had drawn all this doc, this documentation up. To me, yes, I think it does question, this is my job, my responsibility for this transaction. This does not, just by you approving a resolution, it, it's, that resolution says all that, anything that I have to do, and I'm not gonna sign anything without McGlinchey Stafford and George looking over it, that it relates strictly to this transaction, so yes, I think it does, the fact, now, we were told, we couldn't go out and discuss that with anybody, if this got out, when they were in the process of negotiating with these things, I'm not gonna be that one that's gonna muddy that up and contact y'all and tell each one of y'all what that is, that is very serious business, I'm sorry, but we did the work, we started doing what our responsibility, my job, was to do the work to protect Adalia. I've got it, we did it, it's done, I'm asking y'all for, to approve the resolution, to only sign this application for FERC, that's what I'm asking for. Now, if you have a problem with the verbiage, I'll let you talk to council or call McGlinchey Stafford, I'll let you talk to them now, I'll give you their number, if you wanna call them, if you don't wanna vote on this tonight, that's fine, but it, I do feel like it is a question of that, because I'm very specific in saying, I'm only gonna sign for the town what we talked about tonight, nothing more, nothing less.
And I appreciate the offer that you made, my point is, is that offer should have been made, hold on, my point is that offer should have been made prior to voting on the matter tonight. That is my only point. I appreciate the offer that we can call and talk with council, we can call and talk to the other attorneys that worked on it. That would have been great information to know two weeks ago, so that we had the time to do that before executing a document that uses words like any and all, at the sole discretion of ratifying past discussions and decisions, and discussions and decisions moving forth. Because, you mean, I have questions like, did the sale of the property include all contracts, conveyances, and conditions? Was our contract held intact? As far as our contract of the hydroelectric contract, these are questions that, any, if this were a business, if we sat on the board of directors of a business, we would have these questions before-
Right.
-executing a document that says that one person has sole authority to, to do these things. While this document may simply be, and probably is, and you explained actually is, only for the relicensing with FERC, prior to coming in here and, and say, there was no cover letter, there was no email sent, there was just this two-page document which uses words like, giving the authority to execute any and all documents at the mayor's sole discretion, ratifying what has been done and what will be done, those are important words that, as we have seen in the past, can be interpreted differently down the road. Not saying that you would, this is not saying that I don't trust what you have done, this is not saying that I don't believe you have amassed a staff of people who are fantastic at their jobs, but as we have seen in the last couple months, we don't know what tomorrow brings and who'll be sitting in that chair in a week from now if something were to happen to you. By signing a document like this without knowing all information ahead of time, we could be signing over the rights that we were not given the full education of-
I'm telling you, Ms. Dory, you were not, I'm telling you, we spent money with the, with the professional law firm that's handling this, that knows it, who do you wanna call that you can call and say, oh, make me feel better? Who do you wanna pay to do that? We're done that. Counsel, go ahead.
If I might. I got into this about May 8th, when I started talking with the attorney lady in Baton Rouge, and that's when I got this document, you know, and I looked over this document, and it's typical overkill by a large law firm. However, I've looked at it, and the essence is, what's being approved is for the town to sign the application as a co-licensing to reissue the right to run the hydro plant by Catalyst and the town. I mean, that's it, that's what, what we're doing, and all of this stuff in there, I'm assuming that the attorney in Baton Rouge drafted this in accordance with what she knows about what FERC wants-
Right.
-in things. And I looked in here, and there's, what it says in essence, if you take all the language out of there, is that the mayor, anything that he talked about with them and agreed to with them, only having to do with getting the license reissued, not in the name of Catalyst and a bank in New York somewhere as the trustee of some unnamed partners, they're getting them out, so it's gonna be the town and Catalyst. And so, anything he did up front was being approved only to do that job.
Right.
Can't do anything else.
Mm-hmm.
So, all the extra language about documents and this and that, it has to be in order to satisfy FERC to get the application in just Catalyst and the town. I mean, he can't change anything else.
Fantastic. Given that information, I vote to approve, I make the motion to approve.
I thought we said that earlier. Alderman McCoy, you had a question though, before we go further, I mean-
Yeah, my, my question was behind Alderman Dory, and her concerns with the wording. If, if the wording, one or two words in a document, put this, put this in the history of that, council, do we, do we not have the, to suggest to the-
Take the verbiage out.
... that those particular words that concern her, that we could change?
Alderman McCoy, I wouldn't change words from a, from a seasoned professional lawyer to someone other than what they said, I'm sorry, I just, I mean, I don't have, I'm, I'm trusting them, they're being, we're being, we're paying them to use their professional expertise on what to say. I certainly don't, and nobody else sitting in this room, other than maybe our, our, our council, should question their wording or verbiage on this thing, because they're representing us, and we should trust what they're doing for us.
I think we regard that, whatever he's saying, I think we firmly-
I think, 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 I think,